How'd your play go?
It was good.
Got some notes there. Where are you?
Hmm? I just take notes as I read stuff. One of us has to look at this.
I have every copy of everything that needs to be signed here, so if you want to just hang around after.
Okay.
And then just have you sign everything, so you don't have to sign anything you have there. Does that work for you with the ordinance?
The other clerks never got this, sir. You must be doing a good job.
Oh, or a different job. We'll see.
Okay, I'm gonna call the this meeting of the Motley City Council of July 9th. To order.
July 8th.
July 8th, yes. Sorry about that. Join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice are all.
Okay, roll call. Steve Johnson's here.
Here.
Nikki Sharp is here. And I'm here. April's not here, and Dennis is not here. Next item we have is a public hearing to approve the flood plan ordinance. Is there anybody from the public here that would like to address the council on this matter? Here are none. Move on from the public hearing, and if you're looking for a motion to adopt the revised flood plan ordinance.
Um, Pat, you have to read page three out loud.
Uh, the way it's worded, it sounds like I would read it afterwards.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to adopt.
Wait a second.
Flood plan ordinance.
I'll second it.
So any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Now, for a summary of the flood plan ordinance. The City of Motley Council adopted a newly revised flood plan ordinance at the July 8th, 2024 city council meeting. The ordinance was based off the Minnesota DNR model flood plan ordinance to satisfy the state and federal standards detailed in Minnesota statutes, chapter 103F. Many Minnesota rules parts 6120 dot 5000 dash 6120 dot 6200, the rules and regulations of the National Flood Insurance Program in 44 CFR 59 to 78. The ordinance provides the general regulations for development in flood flood planes as well as procedures guiding administrative responsibilities. A copy of the ordinance in its entirety is available for inspection at City Hall located at 316 Highway 10 South Motley, Minnesota 56466, or on the city website if applicable. Okay. Moving on. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Anybody have anything they'd like to add or take away?
I do. Um, I wanted to add, um, extra claims number 1268 through 1271. I gave you each a copy of those. The total of 1,490.55. And then the totals, those are just extra bills that came in today that I wanted to get paid. Sorry, I have to do this again. Number 1248, I want to change that total to $12.15. And number 1262, I wanted to change to 1,3750. And those were just, um, an extra, a few extra items came in for those. One was a Gopher State one. And located, and then the other one was Sourcewell.
Okay. Add that on to the claims list?
Yeah.
Any other changes? Here are none. Moving on. Consent agenda. Uh, A, claims, and B, minutes of the regular June 10th meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will make that motion.
Wait a second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Next, we have approved resolution 2024 dash 14 to begin updates on comp comprehensive plan. That's in page 39. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Wait a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Next, approved resolution 2024 dash 15 to allow Sourcewell to collaborate with Regent Five on behalf of the City of Motley to update comp plan. That's on page 41. Do I have a motion to approve?
I will make that motion.
Wait a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Next is department reports, beginning with planning and zoning. And it says the council may form a comprehensive plan task force. We're late a couple council members. Maybe we should flip this off to rest around. Okay. Let's see. Anything else anybody notice that could come forward from the planning and zoning? Moving forward. Fire department business.
Uh, calls for June, one medical, one motor vehicle accident, and two fires for a total of four. Item number two. Uh, we received a calendar donation made out to the fire department rather than the relief association, so we're looking to have you accept that donation and put it into the fire truck fund.
Do I have a motion to approve that request?
I will make that motion.
Wait a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Anybody have anything for the fire team? Thank you. Next up, police department. Now, you're on deck.
Thank you. So we have, um, a total of 55 calls last month. And a total for the year is 282 calls. It's called out twice from home. And outlines the call list there. And that's about it. We've had several complaints of juveniles in town kind of disturbing the peace, and I've kind of taken care of that issue. I think we've been last week, we're pretty much nice. So, at least three of them have gotten citation, and the 404th one has to do some community service. Hopefully that stops it. Other than that, it's been going good. Now, the nuisance list, as you can tell, is not on there. Some of them have taken care of the problem, and I kind of want to go back with Bruce and kind of go over it, and maybe before we put their name in the paper, make sure that it's... Make sure we have it correct. Not put ones in there that don't, that took care of the matter. So we didn't get time to do it. I was on vacation a week ago, so, for a week, and we'll get it done for the next meeting.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Anybody have anything for the police department? Thank you. Thanks, public works.
Okay, your report's on page 47. I would like to... Water meters, we got 155 done, another 380. The charging station is down again. I just got word, and just looking it up before the meeting here, that the Tritium, the company that made, manufactured the thing, and has been providing, or providing support for it supposedly, is going bankrupt, it sounds like. So, I don't know how much longer we'll be able to get parts and service. We'll have to see, but I'll keep looking for options in the meantime. I know the last time they gave us a quarter, it was 40,800 for, for the unit, so we'll see. But there is, um, some grant stuff out there. If it lines up with this infrastructure funding right now to give a network across the country, that might cover 80%, but we'll see. But I'll keep digging into it, come back next month. Tough on that, so. If you got any other questions on the report, or any questions, I should say. If not, moving ahead. We did get Community Impact Fund Grant Fund. We got that okay today, I guess, so that'll cover, um, truck box and plow and the new Skater computer at the water plant, so. That was about $47,800 or something like that, so. That was quite nice. Water plant started leaking here about a week ago, a week and a half ago, something like that. Called the engineer, and he said it should still be under water warranty, so I got the company to put it on to come up and take a look. And the last I heard, we haven't seen a bill yet, but they says, "Well, the roof is covered, but the silicone around the edges isn't, and that's what failed," so. So, we'll see what kind of building, but they supposedly fixed it all, so. That's just an update on that, so hopefully it's not horribly expensive. They did spend about three hours, two days here, so.
Is that caused by weather at all, or just old age?
I guess, it's, yeah. You would have thought it would last longer now, but it's kind of, yeah. It is, it was built in 2015, so it's nine years old already, I guess. Don't know how they seem like it, but time flies. Last Thursday, a new truck did arrive. It's sitting back in the shop, or back in the firehouse, so once we, now that we're getting this grant stuff, we'll get all the stuff going and try and get it assembled, so before winter time. And then I've been getting some questions about, from different people, about fall cleanup. And they, we did not budget for one this year, just the spring one that we normally do. Last year, we got a grant for a fall one, so we did it, but it wasn't, uh, used a whole lot, so I didn't go ahead. But now I'm getting more and more questions. I just wanted to ask you guys, should we try another one and, and just do it whatever it costs? Or do we hold it off a year, or what do you think?
How did it do last year?
It wasn't a lot of people, but it was kind of, it was first time thing and kind of new, so maybe that was part of it. Maybe it wasn't publicized enough, I don't know, but, um... It was nothing like the spring one that really got used, but it'd be nice if we, especially with the nuisance list, if we can, like, do it in the fall, too.
Would we do it at the same time as the Oktoberfest? They're doing another Oktoberfest or...
Right, whatever, I don't care, yeah.
Or is there a better time to do it?
Yeah, I, whenever we want, yeah. Just kind of pick the week that worked out last time. Think you're onto something. I hope that's people can come and run it. Just kidding. Right, yeah.
Volunteer?
Yeah. If I remember right, the last time we got a call, so I forgot to look it up, but, um, it would be like 2,500 in our cost, but depending on how much you use it gets, and that kind of stuff, so.
Is that something we could use our 10% money on?
I don't know.
Because I think we can use it for, like, public safety times, and, and clean up day with all under public safety.
Maybe we should dig into that, get back, come back next month. If we're interested, I'll, I'll look at getting, um, another updated quote and see what, what nowadays costs.
Yeah, there was something in there, um, to do with public service or the community, so I think that's worth looking into.
There too.
And I think that fund balances, there's...
Is it something you think we should look into, is, I guess, is the biggest thing, so. We'll move ahead and look into it, then. All right.
When did we have it last year? Like, August, September?
I think it was October.
It was around the 18th, whatever that was.
October.
Yeah, it was October. And what, it was the same days, Fall Fest, wasn't it?
Oh, was it?
Oh, that's so.
Yeah.
Oh, well, that was a bad...
Yeah, I remember that.
I couldn't remember that. Let's see.
And I thought, wasn't there also Bruce money, or weren't we gonna look into funds from Morrison County for the fall cleanup?
Well, we got some, uh, we, for spring, we did.
Okay.
We got, already got a grant through here. It was October 21st last year. So. And Fall Fest would have been the 14th last year, so.
Oh, maybe we have scheduled one to do it, too.
Yeah, I think we did. So, we'll get some more members and then we'll be back next month. Let's find out, go ahead. That's all I have, unless you have something else.
Anybody have anything for Bruce? Thank you. Moving on. Administration Department.
I just wanted to ask for permission to post public hearings. This public hearing, um, I know we're supposed to post in the Morrison County Record, but I also posted it in Staples World, just because it's a more local paper. And, um, I just want to know if I can be joined with the authority to go ahead and do that for future public hearings, or if you want to go case by case? I don't know how to handle that, too.
Do I have a motion to approve a city clerk to post public hearings in the Staples World as well as Morrison Record?
I will make that motion, and I think it's a good idea myself.
Do we have a second?
Aye, let's second that.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. That was all you had, Morrison. Anybody have anything for the clerk? Thank you. Old business. Police Department Facebook page previous administration release.
Nope, all taken care of.
All taken care of, okay. Any other old business? Moving on, new business. Discussion for keyless entry system for City Hall.
Um, I will comment on that. Just wondering if council members think it would be an advantage, or advantages and disadvantages of maybe having a keyless entry system here at the City Hall, maybe to provide a higher level of security, and there's not so many keys out there. Seeing what your thoughts are. Look, there's been many years of the keys being given out, and I just wonder what that knocks on. Maybe we could discuss, you know, the different...
Time, the idea.
Department has to, how they feel about it.
Do we have any idea what it would cost?
No, we don't, yeah. That's what I, one of my questions is if we should maybe get a couple quotes from different companies and see what they offer, and then how we issue one decode to outside organizations who want to use the City Hall, and maybe compile a bunch of questions for them.
We did get quotes from like 10 years ago, now my school was, it was about $50,000 to do everything.
To do everything.
How much?
$50,000, that was all the buildings. So, the Kenwood Ward was here, but the number doors, all that kind of stuff.
That's all, all the doors?
It went by all doors, yeah. She's talking about all the other buildings, too, right? Yeah. Water plant, Madison plant, and this.
Okay.
But if we maybe, maybe just check on the price for just this building, see what it is, might be cheaper.
Yeah, interior, exterior, I mean, there's just so many things.
This is probably the most expensive building I can remember, but we might still have the quotes later on or something.
Initially, sounds like a lot of money, but...
We had budget for it at one time, and it's got, which decides.
Just for thought, I think it would be nice, like Al mentioned, maybe just this building, because the other buildings are pretty much singular, you know? A lot of people don't go in them. Just a thought.
I think there was a lot of, um, keys that have been returned, correct?
There's a lot of keys that were checked out and returned, but not a lot of keys that were given out.
Or duplicated, yeah. I just feel like there might be a lot of them floating out there, and, um, with our sensitive files, equipment, and, you know, the confidential information of the police department here. Maybe that's something we should look at.
I think it'd be a good idea to get a price on doing this building. And then bring it back to our next meeting. And go from there.
We could even additionally get a price on just rekeying everything, too, in case you guys decide you don't want to do it, so we don't have to wait so long. You know, because, I mean, she's right, uh, people have been given off for years. We really don't know whose side we're gonna have on, and it's time that we start over. If we're not gonna, we can't spend the money on a keyless, maybe thinking about at least rekeying the doors.
Rekeying, and maybe have a master key at the front where it's checked out and checked back in.
Right.
I don't know.
Yeah, we'll have to figure that out, but it'd be good to get any two prices when you guys decide what you want to do.
Okay.
Okay, who would like to spearhead that?
I can, but I would like to know Bruce without me. Thanks. I'm on my list.
You would take the lead on that?
I can.
Okay. Nikki's gonna take the lead and find out information on a keyless and on rekeying everything that's here.
Got it.
Okay. Anything else on that? Anybody else have any questions? Here are none, moving on. Next, discussion for holding council meetings in larger meeting rooms.
We had talked about that at a meeting, and I know April was, you know, wanted to have them held in the fire department that room over there. So I'm not sure if that's something we need to make a motion on, or you guys just want to leave it here for now, or... Um, you know, it's, we talked about it, but there was really no...
I remember April bringing that up, and I'm thinking we should probably discuss it with while she's here.
Yeah, I would like to. Just table that.
Yeah, we can table that till next month.
Yeah, that's my thing.
I think one thing we need to consider, though, is that the fire department would take precedent. I mean, even if we decided to schedule some meetings over there, if the fire department needed the room for something that they're doing, then we would have to come elsewhere. But we can talk about it next month as far as, you know, there are all the pros and cons to it. Next, we have public forum. Anybody in the public would like to address the council? We're all staring at you, sure.
I know you are. I have nothing to say.
And we weren't really staring. Okay, here are none, we're moving on. Council forum, anybody on the council have anything you'd like to bring forward? Nothing. Upcoming meetings and important dates. Next regular council meeting is Monday, August 12th, 2024, 5:30 PM at City Hall. Planning and zoning meeting is Monday, July 15th, 4:00 PM at City Hall. The comp plan committee work session need to schedule.
Um, there was tentatively going to be a, a comp plan meeting July 22nd at 2:00. An email was sent out, but I guess I was the only one who responded to it. I read it by Savannah, I don't remember her last name, who initiated it. And, um, I reached out to Coyote, because now with these resolutions, I, I reached out to him to see if he wanted to do it that day, or if he's just gonna take care of some... I, I reached out to him to see if he wanted to do it that day, or if he's just gonna take care of setting up the next meeting. I haven't heard back from him yet.
You're, if you're the only one that responded, then I would think it'd be hard to.
She said she would meet with me, but I don't know what I would bring to the table.
Yeah, and I'm not on that committee, so I didn't get that, you know?
No.
This is for the comp plan?
Yeah.
What's the date, the 22nd?
July 22nd at 2 o'clock.
At 2 o'clock?
Mm-hmm. And I think it's a Wednesday, I'm not sure.
It's a Monday?
It is.
22nd is a Monday.
Okay.
Yeah, I could do that.
Okay. Can I just?
Coyote make it, do you know?
He did not reply, so I don't know if he was waiting until after these resolutions were passed, and then he replied.
Okay.
And so I can just let you know what happened.
July 22?
I think April's also on that.
2:00 PM?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll put that on my calendar.
Okay.
And maybe send a reminder out to everybody and see who else wants to show up.
Once I find out, yeah. I just reached out to Savannah today, and she said I was the only one that responded, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll get in touch with her again tomorrow and find out.
Okay, anything else? Motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I second. We're adjourned.
You want us all to sign the, through your, your copy, right?
Yeah, and then there's other things that we just signed for the resolutions, and I have them here. Who was your next one?
Uh, here's, so 45 minute drive.
This is for the.
Thanks. Thanks, yeah.
Well, thank you, Savannah. Just have you sign off on the ordinance. Thank you for bonding, Jerry. Pardon?